Do I have to say hello to the camera?
Yes. Thank you, I have to pass this on to them. Sure, they're probably standing at the Astoria City Hall, wondering where we're at.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
So, next in is approval of the agenda. Do I have any changes or any questions?
Madam Chair, no changes for tonight, as presented.
I have a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to approve, agenda as presented.
A second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hearing done, but it has the end then. The next, we have the consent agenda. Now, do I need to read those into the record?
Madam Chair, please.
Okay. So, number one, consideration of approval for regular meeting minutes of October 5th, 2021. Consideration of approval of treasure check register for September 2021. Consider of approval of finance check registers for September 2021. Consideration of resolution number 212230. Adoption required Community Development Block grant, annual certification and commitments. And, I believe that's all. So, if I could have a motion for approved?
Still moved.
Second? Yeah, I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing done, the motion carries. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, I just was notified that we've got our yard of the month recipients here.
Oh, so.
So, if you'd like to come down, maybe we could greet them down below and get a picture with him.
Okay.
Hit it, not a.
Yeah, they're.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
They're not quite here yet.
They're not quite here. All right. If they're in high.
That happens a lot, so.
It does. Well, welcome. We appreciate what you've done and we're gonna come down and take a picture with you. So, if you want to stand up here by Mr. Carmen.
Always. We appreciate what you did, you probably. Let's get after it, which we're very.
Yeah.
You can take off your pants. Very. Three. Five.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Bruises.
All flowing.
Yeah.
All right. So, under new business, the first is a presentation on. Uh, inverted G, sorry. Sorry, I'll let you say that, transmission L I C project, James Williams, presentation only. Sorry, I butchered that.
No problem. It's okay.
You're good, you're good. We should have a presentation up for you in just a second.
Yeah, no rush, my name's James Williams with Invenergy. So, you're pretty close on that.
Okay.
And, yeah, got it up, spent a few minutes. So, I'm Senior Vice President of our Renewable Development Team. And I have with me here today a few folks I'm gonna introduce are part of the team working on this project we're presenting on today. Eric Obo is with New Mexico Renewable Energy Transmission Authority. Ron Maldonado, at the back there, is with Westland Resources, he's our tribal liaison on the project. And then Cindy Smith here is with Power Engineers, who is working on our stakeholder engagement and routing and constraints for the project. So, go to the next slide, please. I think it sounds like the clicker isn't working today. Appreciate, appreciate. So, first I'll just tell you a little bit about Invenergy, Eric's gonna say a few words about how we're working with New Mexico RITA on the project and then give you a little information what we're looking at in our next steps that we're working on as we roll this out. So, Invenergy is privately held company located here in the United States, we're headquartered in Chicago. I'm out of Denver, Colorado, we've got a 50-person development office there in Denver. We were established in 2001 and we're now among the leading developers in the world of renewable energy. We have over 175 projects that we have developed today or under construction currently. Wind, solar, transmission, natural gas and energy storage, batteries. We have some experience in New Mexico, we worked in Roosevelt County and developed the Sagamore 522 megawatt wind farm, which is the largest operating wind farm in the state, it's now owned by XL Energy. We transferred that to them and they brought it online at the end of 2020. As part of that project, landowners getting payments about a million dollars a year from the wind turbines that are located there. And then as part of the construction process, there was about 800 jobs that were created. So, that's just a little bit about Invenergy. We have now initiated development here in the state on a transmission project. We've entered into a memorandum of understanding with New Mexico Renewable Energy Transmission Authority. And with that, I'm gonna reintroduce Eric here and just get him to say a couple of words.
Chair Commissioners, my name's Eric Obo and I work for the New Mexico Renewable Energy Transmission Authority, or RITA. RITA was established in 2007 by the legislature. And our mission is to plan, finance, develop, permit and acquire high voltage transmission lines that transmit at least 30% renewable energy. We have a five-member governing body and that governing body, that board was appointed by the governor, by the president of the senate, by the speaker of the house, the state treasurer sits on the board, the secretary of the Energy Minerals Natural Resources Department sits on the board. And we started on working on this project with Invenergy about a year ago. And our project selection committee of the board reviewed the details of the project and the entire board agreed to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Invenergy. And we bring kind of some administrative support to the project. And, and this is a project that is, that strongly fits within our mission. And so, because we are a, you know, because we are governed by an appointed board, the, the, the board does the due diligence to verify the bona fides of the companies we enter into agreements with. And this is a project that, that, that fits really well for us. And this is a cornerstone really of what we do with RITA, is to enter into public-private partnerships with developers to help build the transmission infrastructure. The, the transmission, electric transmission infrastructure throughout the state is pretty close to at capacity. There's been very little developed, we are working with some other developers on other projects, but there's been very little developed by the utilities. And this is a project that is, is something that really will help us to meet the renewable energy goals of the, of, that the legislature put in place. And so, you know, as, as you all know, building infrastructure like this is, it helps with economic development during the construction of it, but it also supports the economic development for facilities that may want to locate in New Mexico. There are many big companies that want to make sure they have access to renewable energy and so this is a project that will help with that. And so, James will go through and if at the end of the presentation you have any questions, either of us would be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, thanks Eric, quick handoff there. If we could go on to the next slide, we are very excited to be working with New Mexico RITA. Project fits very well with, with our objectives in advancing transmission developments across the country and then with what New Mexico RITA does here in the state, it's very exciting. So, New Mexico's historically met its own energy needs and helped to power other western states and now New Mexico's renewing its role as the energy supplier. New Mexico RITA performed an analysis in 2020 that was focused on looking at investment in transmission and energy storage across the state and identified upwards of $11 billion of potential investment in transmission that will then facilitate renewable development throughout New Mexico, sort of through the end of the decade. And we feel like our project's gonna fit real well, within that, in addition to meeting some of the objectives of the Energy Transition Act and the 50% renewable targets there. So, why, why northern New Mexico? So, what we've looked at here as part of our, our New Mexico North Path project is to identify the need. And we've identified the generation area for the project, which is in Union County. You can see on the top right there of the map, that's a wind resource map that identifies the areas with the most potential for renewable generation from wind in the state. And then we identified the delivery area and we identified San Juan County as, as a location for that. There's existing pathways to deliver this carbon-free electricity and with local, you know, and regional solutions coming together within the knowledge that there is fossil plants here in the county that are scheduled for retirement, we feel like this is the time to work together and bring some replacement energy. So, if we go to the next slide, please. So, then just talk about the energy and environmental benefits of this project. We're looking to deliver up to 4,000 megawatts of renewable energy across the state. This would be the equivalent of taking about 1 million cars off the road or powering about 2 million homes, so just some equivalencies there. We've identified some information related to carbon dioxide emissions here on this slide. And then, you know, obviously the Energy Transition Act has, you know, 50% renewable energy goal to help reduce those emissions and we think this can play a part in that, as, along with the broader goals of the current administration to reduce carbon emissions long-term. Thank you. So, in terms of the economic benefits, this project is a $2 billion investment in transmission in the state and it would unlock an additional $5 billion in renewable generation that would be able to transport across this infrastructure. You know, what does that lead to? Tens of millions of dollars in, you know, annual tax payments to state and local governments and, and payments to landowners that are participating in the project. From a jobs perspective, we would anticipate a two-year construction cycle with 3,500 jobs that would be part of that development plan and then more than 100 long-term jobs to operate and maintain the transmission infrastructure facilities that we're talking about here. Mentioned our Sagamore Wind Project earlier, testimonial here from one of the landowners participated in that project. So, this energy pathway for New Mexico, you know, what would it look like? This is a simple diagram here, this is not necessarily the final design by any stretch, but just an example of, of what a structure would look like on a transmission line, this technology. We're utilizing high voltage direct current technology here. In this single, on a single line, you can carry the equivalent capacity of multiple AC lines and you can carry it over much longer distances with, with lower losses. And we feel like that is the technology that we utilize here for this particular project because of the scale and the distances that we're talking about. Being able to use a single line on a narrow right-of-way would be preferred for impacts across, across the state. So, in terms of the process and I respect your time, I'm moving a little quick here, so yell if I need to slow down, but hopefully this is making sense. So, you know, we've identified the energy resource and the delivery needs here. We have conducted a feasibility study and we've identified a routing study area, which I'll show you here in just a couple of slides. And then what we're doing right now is the initial stakeholder engagement and initiating our public process. And we're here today to do that. And we've also held these exact same briefings with, of the other counties that we've identified in the routing study area. And what we'd like to do over the next several months is work with stakeholders in the communities, host open houses and get feedback so that we can identify alternatives for routing and then come up with a preferred route. And then as part of that, we would be continuing public engagement and be working towards permitting process and right-of-way acquisition, which we'd expect to start occurring late in 2022. And then finally, we'd look to initiate construction and bring the project online later this decade in 2020. And in February of this year, actually, we could go to the next slide, please. In February of this year, we entered into our initial memorandum of understanding with RITA and we sent out notifications in the local publications. Across the route, also sent a letter to San Juan County and the other counties that are shown in green here, just identifying that we were considering a transmission project and we'd be back to you later this year about this time. So, quickly here on our feasibility analysis that we've conducted, the black dash line was the original boundary of a study area that we looked within to assess the constructability for transmission. We looked at a bunch of different factors as part of that. Then we down-selected to the counties in green, you can see we left out Rio Reba, Taos and Colfax ultimately. In particular, the constructability over the mountains there was a big factor as that analysis concluded. And then we took the, the smaller footprint, the green counties that I mentioned, there's nine total, and we conducted further analysis and, and came up with a routing study area that included eight of those nine counties. that included eight of those nine counties. Could go to the next slide, please. And so this routing study area that you're seeing here encompassed by, again, the black dash line, was what we identified based on, you know, an understanding at a high level best practices for infrastructure siding, paralleling existing infrastructure wherever possible, avoiding sensitive resources wherever we can. And and ultimately came up with this boundary. It's about 25 miles wide on average. The length end-to-end is around 375 miles. I mentioned the eight counties, so Mora County was on our initial list. And then based on our further diligence, then we we limited down to eight counties here, including San Juan. On the western side of this route, you can see the green lines, purple lines, red lines. Those are all existing transmission lines that are in service currently. And we identified those as an opportunity to parallel, you know, existing right-of-way as as a good siding practice. There's also a west-wide energy corridor on federal BLM land in the western part of the state. And that's a pre-identified corridor that can be used for siding linear infrastructure projects. And then on either end, you can see small circles. Those are potential locations from a from a desktop preliminary perspective of converter stations. At each end of a direct current line, you need to convert the power from alternating current to direct current and then and then back down on the other end. And so that's that's what we're showing there. Those are those are just preliminary. But effectively, in San Juan County, we're looking at where the existing infrastructure is located and how we can best tie in to that alternating current grid to deliver the power. Okay, so in terms of public outreach and engagement, here's this, you know, here's where we are today. Given a little more detail from from previously, we're providing these briefings. We then will initiate a community working group, which would consist of 10 to 20 individuals from across the route that would have, you know, leadership roles in the community. Non-political is our request and would provide feedback to us so that we can then roll out public open houses over the next several months into 2022, where we would host open houses at each of the counties, each of the Pueblo tribes that we have within the the boundary and then the chapter houses at Navajo Nation. And then we have a website up and that's all, that's okay. So website, we've got an email that you'll see in a second. I can, the website's not on the last slide, but I can follow up and provide you with that that website link. And then, you know, we'd expect throughout 2022 to be engaging on routing specifics and trying to get to a preferred route that we could initiate permitting. And then I'll go to the last slide here. So we have an email, newmexicotransmission@invenergy.com and a toll-free number, and those are monitored on a daily basis. We initiated those in February when we had the initial memorandum executed with Rita and sent out the initial notifications, and we've been maintaining that ever since. So I will stop there. I really appreciate the opportunity to present here today and and respect your time. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate your presentation. And you answered most of my questions that I was jotting down to you. You hit the points. You were talking about the construction jobs.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the maintenance jobs. And you mentioned as far as 30% renewable energy to meet the criteria. Then later on, you said 50% renewable energy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, explain what the difference is.
So it's a good catch. So there's there's two different items we're talking about there. One is the Energy Transmission Transition Act.
ETA.
The ETA, yeah, the pass in the state legislature here. That looks towards a 50% renewable goal for 2023. Then the 30% is a New Mexico Renewable Energy Transmission Authority statutory requirement that any project that they enter into a partnership with needs to carry at least 30% renewable energy. This project, we'd expect to carry a lot more than, but that's criteria that was put in place when Rita was formed.
Okay. And when you're showing the the routing study, so kind of with the converter stations, so why does it have to be that? How does that work? Where does it go from there? Does it go out from there?
Yeah, no, good, good question. So on on one end, on on this northeastern side of the state, we'd expect that's the location where we would have wind generation and solar generation. And it would be converted to direct current electricity and put on the the line there. And then the off-ramp would be here in San Juan County. And that's where we would connect back to the broader electric grid. And that's how the electrons would flow onto the system. On the eastern part of the state, we probably will still look for a place to connect to the grid for reliability purposes. I mean, everybody knows what happened earlier this year in Texas, for example. And so if there's ways we can connect, you know, to the the current electric grid on either end, we'll be looking to do that.
And you mentioned where where Capes has your projects, but then other than in New Mexico or world some in base?
Yeah, sure. So I mean, we're a global company, but we are headquartered here in the US. And our our primary operations for development are are here in in the United States. So we have other developments that are active in New Mexico but aren't online yet. And then we have wind farms and solar facilities that are in in operation in Texas and Colorado, that are in construction in Arizona, all across the country. Happy to follow up with, give you a couple of page, bi-fold on on the company. Has a nice map that you show you our footprint.
Because she said 175 projects and those are in the US?
That's globally, but but more than 100 of those are in the United States, probably 130.
Okay. And you said that in Roosevelt that you turned it over to XL Energy. So once you had the project complete?
Yeah, so we're looking for the best way to commercialize these projects. For our fleet across the United States, we have 700 employees that are actually operations and maintenance technicians that operate and maintain various power plants that Invenergy has either developed, may still own, or we have third-party relationships. In this particular project in New Mexico of the development transferred to XL, they then constructed the project and are operating the project themselves. We would have loved to do it, but it wasn't part of the contractual arrangement.
And how about hired construction workers? Has that been something that's been done within the locations where you've been?
Yes, it has. You know, typically, we're going to hire a general contractor for a project that's got expertise in, you know, whether it's transmission, construction or renewable construction. But they'll come in before kicking off the construction, we'll we'll set up some job fairs. We're looking at opportunities on this project for training in the local communities as we sort of move towards construction. And wherever they can identify local labor that can support the project, you know, we're always encouraging them to do that and they're looking for that as well. So they're not having to bring full teams here. But obviously, you know, at the the highest level of the project, we need a construction contractor that has experience.
And I think that's all my questions. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
So of the of the $2 billion, is that right? Is that the number you used?
Yes, sir.
That invest, how much of that comes back to San Juan County? How much of that is in San Juan County?
Yeah, so so at a high level, I'd estimate over 600 million would be in San Juan County. The converter stations are are a big capital investment on the project. The line itself, still significant investment. But each of the converter stations, because of the technology utilized there, are are very capital intensive to construct. Rough estimate for you there, but but that's an order of magnitude.
So you would connect into the San Juan generating station?
Yeah, or other infrastructure in the area.
And then kind of back on the jobs, I understand you have to use experienced contractors.
Yeah.
What would be the long-term jobs we could see here? First statewide, and then how many here in San Juan County estimate?
Sure, so we're projecting about 100, 100-plus jobs from a long-term perspective to operate and maintain the facilities statewide. Here locally, you know, maybe 10% of that. I I would be happy to get back to you and give you a little bit better estimate. I'm not sure I have that right off the tip of my tongue.
Let's see what else did I have? So is there any other projects that you tie into this? Or is it just going to be the Kovac County?
We would, did you say Colfax County? So Union County.
Or Union County.
Yeah, that that would be our expectation. So San Juan County and Union County would be the locations where we actually have a drop-off pickup point.
Okay. And then how much do you expect to go out of state? How much energy?
I mean, you know, that it's the interesting thing, very common question, so happy to answer it.
I asked because I was in the Texas freeze.
Oh, okay.
I was stuck there.
You're concerned how much is going. So, you know, electrons don't care where they're going. They're just going to serve. So, you know, exactly where it's going wouldn't be clear. But but this scale of project, you know, the expectation would be that, you know, it it would be connected here in San Juan County and would flow, you know, within New Mexico and then to surrounding states as well, just given the scale, Arizona, Utah. And then we would we would look at a connection, you know, in the New Mexico Union County area or potentially Panhandle of Texas. And that unclear what size that connection would be, but it would be for probably more focus on, you know, extreme events and reliability purposes than actually delivery of of energy.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, just a comment. I'm glad you mentioned that in the public outreach, you were including the tribes, Pueblo's, talking to them. Because that, you know, that's a whole new area with all their own tribal regulations and whatnot. And then, do you, I noticed the right-of-way with the landowners. What do you think? Is that easy or is that quite difficult?
I mean, certainly a project of this magnitude is is not easy. So that's a, you know, that's a long process, you know, probably a one to two to your your process that we would go through. What we're doing right now in the front end is to try to to make that land acquisition as streamlined as possible because we want to get feedback from folks like yourself. We want to engage potential landowners as early as we can and get that feedback so that when we go out with a route, it's been discussed. And then, yes, we would need to acquire those right-of-ways from the different parties.
Like that, and the routing, you're thinking of, you know, I guess it's the there's transmission lines and you're thinking of utilizing that.
Yeah, and and to be clear, you know, we'd be looking to parallel. So we wouldn't utilize their their existing right-of-way, but we'd try to be as near as we could so that, you know, that corridor that's already there is is being utilized.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And I'm just looking at your website and the spot map to remember where that you are. So, so, okay, I don't have any more questions. Does anybody else?
I just have one. Do you have agreements, some power purchase agreements already?
No. No, we're we're early in the process right now. That would come later as we advance the development.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
No other questions. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Okay, thank you very much for the time. Much appreciated.
Next on the agenda, we have a consideration of approval of resolution number 212231. Sheriff's Patrol Division to return to 10-hour work schedule. Cordell Tanner. Hello.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. It's not me chirping, right?
No. Give me the phone.
You're used to chirping. I've been known to chirp.
The carrie is still chirping, and that's a good sign.
Members of the commission, in April of 2020, we became a senior request to go to a 12-hour workshop for the Patrol Division in an effort to alleviate covered shortages. After 18 months, those 12-hour shifts have turned out to be unsuccessful in alleviating those shortages and inadvertently led to deputy fatigue as the 12-hour shifts often turned into 13 and 14-hour days, workdays. After consultation with the county manager, legal, human resources and finance departments, we're ready to return to the 10-hour work shifts on Halloween to beginning of the pay period. Along with the return to the 10-hour work schedule, we would be unfreezing the two deputy positions that were frozen to account for the increased salary costs that came with the 12-hour shifts. So essentially, we would be back where we were a year and a half ago. And respectfully, we request commission to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
If there's no questions, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Resolution number 21 dash 22 dash 31.
I'll second that.
Yeah, first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none opposed, then it's passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on number three, consideration of approval of resolution number 212229 to authorize the sale of a tract of real property in the old road 300 right-of-way situated between 7 Road 3,500 and 350 Road 3,500 in Flora Vista, New Mexico. And Mr. Sawyer.
Madam Chairwoman, commissioners, last year, Mark Hawkinson of Flora Vista approached the county about buying the old county right-of-way where the road in Flora Vista hit the highway. He owns the property on either side of that right-of-way. And at that time, the commission pointed a freeholders committee, which is a very old statute where three members of the public are appointed to look at roads and decide whether they can be abandoned or not. And that freeholders committee came back and and recommended abandonment. And the commission ordered that right-of-way abandoned on November 10th, 2020. So the tract has been surveyed and appraised at $3,100 in value. And as a result, normally when the county sells property, if it's over $5,000, we have to get it approved by the Department of Finance and Administration. And so since it's under that amount, we don't need to go through that procedure. So what, but we have prepared a resolution, which is our normal process for formal authorization, even though we've previously previously authorized it. So before you, is a resolution to approve the sale of that parcel of land. So staff would ask that you that you approve that resolution.
Do I have any questions about this? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve 212229.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Now we go on to consideration of notice of intent to adopt ordinance number 121 and ordinance requiring remediation of coal-fired electricity generating facility upon retirement. Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Madam Chair, commissioners, before you, for consideration is a notice of intent to adopt ordinance 121, which would require remediation of coal-fired electricity generating facilities once they are retired. So what the ordinance would do would be it would require owners of coal-fired generating facilities that are being retired to submit remediation or cleanup plans to the county. And those plans must describe how the facilities will be remediated and how the remediation will be funded. After the plan is approved by the county with the assistance of a qualified engineer, the facility will be demolished upon requirement, according to the plan in accordance with federal, state and local law. Retirement is defined under the ordinance as complete and permanent closure of generating facility once the facility ceases to generate electricity. It does not include switchyards and transmission, distribution and water conveying systems. So if the commission approves the notice of intent to adopt, the legal department will schedule proper publication and the ordinance will be placed on the agenda for the November 9th, 2021.
So I, there's just a few questions and maybe you can clarify. And so I I thought that it was given that the owners of the respective power plants in San Juan County would be required to fully demolish the plant upon ceasing operations.
Madam Chair, you, that is the case in other plants like Four Corners Power Plant. And as you saw, the Navajo Generating Station in Page, those were demolished. But those were pursuant to agreements between the Navajo Nation and the power plants. Actually, we don't know yet about Four Corners Power Plant, but we believe that that kind of agreement exists. But that's why the Navajo Generating Station was demolished. To our knowledge, there's To our knowledge, there's no, there's no underlying agreement like that that absolutely requires that the power plant be demolished. So we thought it prudent to uh, put this ordinance in front of you.
So, so what I understand, uh, hear you saying is that there's a chance that this would not happen.
Um, Madam Chair, from what we've seen in the media, it it appears that right now, we've heard discussion of a retire-in-place scenario, which what they would do would be they would just shut down the plant, um, uh, put a fence around it, and then they could just walk away, making sure that, you know, it's locked up, but otherwise not demolished. So, that's how I understand it.
And what we're proposing here is that we, is what citizens would expect to happen with this ordinance.
Madam Chair, I I would believe so. I I I think that your average citizen um, would expect that once the plant is is had its useful life, that it would be demolished. That's what happens with with coal mines. And that's what's happened with other plants such as uh, the Navajo Generating Station. Um, I don't remember the the number, but all over the country, they're retiring power plants now. And and when they are no longer being used, they've been demolished. So we wanted to make sure we have the mechanism in place that would require that in San Juan County.
Okay, and um, what other options are there for for decommissioning of a power plant?
Um, Madam Chair, I believe, I think it could probably run the gamut from what they proposed, which is just retirement in place, where they would just lock it up to all the way to what we're proposing here, which is full demolition, decommissioning, which would be you you take it completely off the land and you restore the land to where the way it was before the power plant was there.
Okay, and how much funding did the ETA provide for the decommissioning?
Uh, Madam Chair, um, I believe under the ETA, uh, they've provided thirty million for remediation. Um, I've seen just in the media that often it'll cost up to a hundred and fifty million to actually fully remediate. I think that's about what it costs for um, for Navajo Generating Station, but I'm not sure.
So that would be determined at the time, decommissioning part two.
Well, Madam Chair, under our ordinance, um, they would have to provide a plan for remediation. And that would be, and we'd have a qualified engineer that the county would hire to evaluate those plans. And and they should be able to come up with the number that they think it'll cost.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Sawyer?
Yeah. Sure. Um, is there any examples you can give us in San Juan County where somebody's abandoned a a refinery or something like that? And it just becomes an eyesore? Or is this something new?
Um, Madam, Madam Chair, uh, Commissioner Lanier, I believe, you know, just off the top of my head, examples I can think of are the old Thriftway Plant that on Hammond Ditch Road, or I don't know the official name of that road, but it's out on Hammond Ditch. That that was just kind of left there. Um, I can't think of any other offhand, but I know that they exist. Maybe Mr. Stark.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Lanier, uh, the facility that's in a catty corner from McGee Park, northeast corner, northeast part of the property there would be another example. So there have certainly been some industrial sites that have been left as eyesores for the community. Time and just to follow up on Mr. Sawyer's comments, this ordinance is um, to help ensure that that won't be the case. We, we, we hope that the owners of San Juan Generating Station will do, will do the right thing in putting together their final plan, which has not been released yet. And so I thought it would be prudent to bring this forth to you right now to make certain that the owners, ultimately, if 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 it's the current owners today, it could be the future owners um, with Enchanted Energy. Whatever that is, they would be responsible upon ceasing operations to fully demolish the the site and as Commissioner Ford mentioned, do what the citizens are expecting in this case. I think everybody's expecting that that would be the right thing to leave uh, that land, uh, this area better than they found it, the owners of San Juan Generating Station.
Thank you, and and um, has it been the understanding that P and M is committed to and thinks the right way for their own policy?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, and some research, you know, um, they actually have a document uh, online that that talks specifically about that. It's the doing the right thing policy that speaks to how important it is to meet environmental, social, and governance goals uh, throughout their entire organization. And I think this would certainly apply to that, that, you know, having benefited uh, here from from our area in terms of resources, in terms of the workforce, um, almost fifty years of being in this area, which we certainly appreciate having that kind of economic activity here. But of course, when when that facility ceases to operate, um, the right thing would do, like we just mentioned, the right thing to do would be to make sure that that we don't have a visible eyesore on the landscape or any lingering negative environmental consequences. And this, this ordinance would help to ensure that.
Any other questions?
I have one. So, just to make sure I've got this right. So if, if we don't make them decommission it correctly, who is responsible? Let's say there is a leak or some some type of contamination that we find ten years later. Who who would be responsible for that without this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lanier, you would have oversight from from other agencies that oversee um, power plant operations and ultimate closure. As it relates to environmental issues, the Mexico Environment Department certainly have a hand in in those specific matters. But you know, if you, if you leave the the property as is and take care of the the basic reclamation needs such as asbestos remediation, um, the rind ponds, you know, the the ash that's been buried on site. You know, all those things, you're always better off if you've had a full remediation than partial. Um, there's less likelihood of of long-term consequences, but there would be oversight on the environmental side of things. Where there's not oversight currently today, there's no requirement to provide uh, San Juan County and the citizens of San Juan County plan is on the demolition of the facility itself, the smokestacks and the backhouses and all the other infrastructure that exists there today. Uh, but it should be important to note, though, there are some infra, there is some infrastructure at the plant that would need to to be reused in the future. Like the presentation we just had from kind of energy, if they decide to to tie in to the substation at San Juan Generating Station, that needs to stay in place. The water conveying systems. I believe that the owners of the generating station are in negotiations with the Navajo Gallup Water Pipeline Project to tie in the inlet structures uh, there. So that's spelled out in the ordinance that those those pieces of of equipment and or infrastructure that need to remain for facilitating, you know, other projects in the area, that of course needs to stay in place, but it's the, it's the big, the big structures that you can see from many, many miles away, AKA the smokestacks that I think a lot of folks are expecting to see what happened at Navajo Generating Station just up in Page, Arizona, just a short period of time ago when they detonated those and demolished them. Now they're hauling off material. They may be burying some of that material on site, I don't know, but but nonetheless, there's not going to be like visible, visible eyesore on the landscape.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I remember in the past when um, um, P and M used to invite community leaders to their uh, meetings and where they would talk about being a good neighbor, steward, good stewards of the land. And um, I think uh, they need to be held to what they used to tell us as community members here, that remediation is important. And uh, hopefully, it's too bad we have to get this ordinance in order to get them to do what's right. But I think it's, has to be done. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then I need a motion to adopt ordinance number one twenty-one.
Motion to approve ordinance um, number.
One twenty-one.
One twenty-one.
Madam, Madam Chair, this is just approval of the notice of intent to.
Oh, the notice of intent.
Okay.
Right, okay, all right. So we have met that to notice of intent?
Yes.
All right, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries.
All right, now we have report from the county manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner. Uh, just one item for you tonight, and then I'll defer to Mr. Mestis to maybe a COVID update. Um, some of the increased cases we're seeing. Uh, we do have a ribbon cutting scheduled for our newly constructed mountain bike uh, Skills Park. It's up on the north end of Farmington, off of Foothills Drive. For October twenty-seventh at three thirty, uh, that project was done in conjunction with the Bureau of Land Management. So we'd like to cut the ribbon on it. It's a nice addition to the the outdoor rec uh, community here. And Mr. Perrell and Public Works Team certainly be commended for all the work that they've done uh, in putting that project together. We just recently chip sealed the parking lot, so that, that put us in a position to be able to have this ribbon cut. And they got it done right before the winter season ends, so.
And where where Kenzie is it, is on the clay?
So the Kenzie Trail System.
Oh, the Kenzie Trail.
Uh, which is up off of Foothills, uh, just to the, to the west of there is the new parking lot uh, that we've built. Um, and tied in uh, the various Kenzie Trail System as well as a trail system, trail called Mood Swings that ties into the Anasazi Trail that's just north of Pedro Vista High School. Um, right up there is where this Skills Park has been constructed. And eventually, the BLM has plans to add a picnic shelter and some vault toilets and changing area for bikers. So it'll be kind of a one-stop shop with everything somebody needs to go spend a day on the trails, so. That's all I have for you tonight. And I'll, like I said, turn it over to Mr. Mestis. I know he's got a fairly lengthy update on the ever-evolving world of COVID, you know.
Good evening, Madam, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Uh, COVID updates, uh, for today's uh, commission meeting. As we all know, COVID numbers continue to spike in San Juan County. Uh, it was very noticeable yesterday with the three-day total of uh, three hundred and eighty-four positives. Uh, number one in the state, uh, by the way, where Bernario County was at three eighty-two, uh, three-day total. So, doesn't be proud of, but we know, uh, and we've been keeping an eye on, on the COVID positives within San Juan County. Uh, with a great emphasis on keeping an eye on what's happening in the detention center as well. The word yesterday was crisis standards of care, as you all have have seen or saw on social media. What does that mean? I provided that uh, uh, question to San Juan Regional Medical Center because mostly it affected the hospital. Uh, what I was told was quote unquote, was quote, uh, the quick answer, uh, there would be no change for them unless uh, they applied for the crisis standards of care to the state. Uh, so, uh, as of today, uh, things will be the same at San Juan Regional. Uh, Mr. Stark and I do have a meeting with uh, county leadership or correction, uh, hospital leadership in the morning. Uh, we'll find out more of what their plans are, uh, and what they're uh, planning to implement. So uh, we'll continue to share that information over to you. Before I continue to my next subject, uh, is there any questions uh, from the commission regarding um, COVID?
I, I have a question. I noticed that there's still places where people can get vaccinated. Are people responding to that because that's so key, I mean, to survival? But uh, I'm just wondering, are are they taking advantage of it because they're free?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Tolda Chaney, uh, yes, by all means, uh, the local Department of Health is continuing to do vaccination clinics uh, three times a week. McGee Park, uh, the, the city of Farmington, Rec Center, and at San Juan College. Uh, in fact, uh, Care Drug, uh, and Astec and Bloomfield are continuing to do vaccinations of Pinion Pharmacy. Uh, and then San Juan Regional Medical Center in their uh, their COVID uh, clinics as well. Uh, Rita, Department of Health, has advised me that she's getting pretty good turnout. Uh, she's getting good turnout for her booster uh, vaccinations as well. Uh, she's hitting those tiers as they come available. But yes, the the short answer to your question is folks are taking advantage. Uh, and again, it's just the people that have uh, taken the advantage of the vaccine before they're coming back and getting their boosters. So, we really need to be hitting the the folks that are unvaccinated, uh, and I don't have those numbers for you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lanier?
Mr. Mestis, um, this play a unfair question for you, but is the, is the hospital talking about kind of going back and not having elective surgeries again? Are we going to get to that state again?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lanier, uh, that uh, is part of crisis standards of care as it relates to what the state enacts. Uh, I'm speaking to Dr. Greenberg today, uh, right now elective surgeries are still in place. Uh, from what he told me, uh, crisis standards of care is actually an application to request uh, from the state what they can do. And he'll speak to uh, Mr. Stark and I and the mayor's tomorrow morning regarding what their plan is.
I know that's a financial burden on them, and especially other places.
And I know they're doing everything possible. Uh, we kind of had a a side conversation today. He said, hey, we've been in crisis standard of care for two years, trying to do everything possible that we could do at San Juan Regional to keep things going, so admire what they've been doing all this time.
I, do you have any more questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, and then, um, do we know if uh, these, uh, the rise in COVID have been related to non-vaccinated?
Madam Chair, uh, I personally don't know that, but that's all the, all the information that's coming out uh, from Dr. Scrae's, from from all the uh, information from media, that a lot of the vaccination or the lot of the positives are coming from people that are unvaccinated. A lot of the hospital stays are from people that are unvaccinated, uh, the deaths, people that have been unvaccinated, so.
Madam Chair, I could add to that quickly. The hospital reported to us at our emergency operations center call on Thursday that eighty-five percent uh, of the admissions there are related to unvaccinated folks. At least fifteen percent that are vaccinated, so they are seeing some breakthrough cases that are resulting in possible vaccination rates.
Thank you. Just so much going on, I can't remember.
That is that they haven't met the level of immunity from their their vaccine, because there's a lot of confusion about that. They just didn't. You know, if somebody has a pre-existing condition, um, I think it's really important for people to understand that their immune system is compromised. And so they didn't respond like maybe I would, so I met that level of immunity. And then also, um, I've heard a lot of discussion about cross-vaccination between Pfizer and Moderna. It's been on the news recent, just like this morning. Have you heard anything about that for a booster?
There was, there was a little talk, um, and now, but I, I don't, haven't heard much. Uh, there was talk about, uh, yesterday I was watching the news and there was talk about uh, being able to do that. I don't think that's been uh, fully uh, okayed by the CDC yet.
Okay, and we're still um, have have to be uh, have pre-existing conditions in order to receive booster, is that correct? And it's only Moderna or?
Uh, at this time, it's it's only, Madam Chair, at this time, it's only Pfizer. Moderna G and J uh, has initially been approved, but it's not fully approved by CDC. So Pfizer at this time, uh, the tiers have changed from uh, underlying conditions to sixty-five and older. And then now this week, it's changed down to essential workers. So the first responders and nurses are are able to obtain it at this time.
Okay.
And the way to do that, I'm sorry to cut you off, way to do that is to make sure you get on vaccine N M uh, dot org. And then uh, they'll contact you when you have a, uh, uh, chance to get your vaccine.
So still register?
Yeah, still register.
Okay, and then as far as testing, um, just so people know what's available right now?
So, uh, testing in San Juan County, uh, we have uh, the Curative Sites in McGee Park uh, on Mondays through Thursdays at Aztec Schools at Fred Cook or at uh, Farmington at Central Office on Thirtieth Street. Curatives helping us out a lot there. Uh, Reliance is helping with the testing as well as Pinion Pharmacy, Family Pharmacy as well. So, and Walgreens.
And Walgreens, so for a person that, you know, is not here in this meeting, how do they find these sites for testing? Do they go to Curative and that's how?
They can go to curative dot com, uh, they can sign up and and make an appointment. They can drop by Walgreens, uh, and the pharmacist will test them there as well. Reliance, you have to make an appointment as well as uh, Pinion Pharmacy.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Mestis?
Madam Chair, I saw this little article on, um, you know, we're, we're saying all these people are dying from COVID. But there's other people who are dying from other things. And, um, because sometimes they just think, uh, it's so focused on them, but they let their health go. And I had a friend who was like that, who should have gone to the hospital for a kidney infection. And there was all that thing about only the COVID people would be admitted in. And she waited too long and, um, she passed away. And I always think of that is like, what is happening to these other people who aren't getting their appointments? And these unvaccinated people are so selfish and taking all the bids and, you know, at the hospital. And I thought, what about the other people who need medical attention and care?
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Todechini, uh, that's a great question. In fact, Dr. Scrae added that yesterday to, uh, his, uh, webinar. Uh, and he said crisis standard of care doesn't mean, uh, if you're sick, not come to the hospital. Seek, uh, medical attention from your doctor if you're sick, uh, if you still need procedures, still, still go through your regular channels. Uh, and not think that COVID is the only thing being taken care of.
That's important. Thank you. Okay, that's a really good point. And then was that a two-day, uh, call with Dr. Scrae? Or was it just yesterday?
It was just yesterday.
Okay.
At three P M, it was the, the COVID update and the release of crisis standard of care.
Oh, it was, okay, and was that when they showed the video of the nurse speaking about, for nurses?
Yes, he did show that video.
Okay, because I just watched that today and it's very touching, you know, really to plead people to take care of themselves. Because, uh, from my own personal experience, um, in talking to a lot, I've been in nursing for decades. So I have a lot of friends that are nurses and they're, they're exhausted and truly they're exhausted. So I just want to really make a plea to, if you have an opportunity, I don't know if it's on the New Mexico Department of Health.
It is.
Website, um, to watch that video. It's very short, but it's very heart-touching. And when you think about, um, seeing a nurse in a room, she has to garb totally up. She has to go in the room and help the patient. She's stuck in there for however long, maybe an hour or more. Then she has to come out, ungarb, and then re-garb to go into another room, stay in there. So really, it really impacts every individual patient's time with the nurse. So if there's an emergency out here and she's in a room, she has to ungarb. And, you know, we're talking about critically ill patients here that need care right then and there. So we want to keep our, our healthcare workers safe, and so I appreciate your report.
Yes, Madam Chair, and, uh, the New Mexico Department of Health Facebook page is where, uh, others can find that video. It's, it's a great video.
It is, thank you.
Yes, and, uh, lastly, uh, I'd like to provide a, a report, and Mr. Neely will come and help me out with this. I was asked by, by staff to, uh, provide a rationale as to messaging, uh, within San Juan County Office of Emergency Management, uh, and our social media page. Uh, in regard to, uh, relaying information from government to, uh, citizens in regard to COVID. Um, and I asked Mr. Neely, who's my PIO, uh, and the county GIC lead. Uh, the emergency management and the emergency operations center uses the Joint Information Center to provide information to our public. And I'll let Mr. Neely explain our rationale behind, uh, how we put information out to our public. Super medical.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh, I act within the Joint Information Center when we're in a state of emergency. And I work with other local public information officers to get the information on the street. This has been a unique challenge, and as I'm sure you're, um, fatigued as is everyone else, uh, hearing anything about coronavirus and COVID. More deaths and more illness is extremely challenging and it wears on all of us, myself included, Mike included, everybody else, uh, just as much and some more than others. Uh, we have found that in, uh, putting out our information, it is best received, uh, coming from a medical professional, from somebody who knows what they're talking about. Not necessarily coming from the government, maybe through the government, shared by the government. But we find that our constituents find those trusted voices in the medical professionals in the community here. And so we really worked to share, uh, what I would deem to be facts, daily caseloads, uh, daily, uh, counts of, of those who've died, uh, things of that nature. Where do you get a test? Where do you get vaccinated? Those sorts of things, but we leave the, the messaging that is intended to change a behavior or influence a behavior. Like telling folks to go vaccinate, we leave those to the, the true professionals that's in regional and other, uh, medical organizations. Uh, the V O H is a trusted source, there are some other trusted sources like that. And so as we move through what is coming up on two years of truly being in an emergency situation, we've toolled, uh, our messaging as we go and we change our strategy. And that's where we are right now. So realize our channels through City of Farmington, City of Aztec, City of Bloomfield, San Juan County, uh, for true dissemination of fact and updating people on the situation as it stands. And we attempt to lean on our, uh, medical community when it comes to those sorts of messages. And, and frankly, the bottom line is this is a, a conversation between, uh, an individual and their doctor, but that they need to make that decision. Uh, what is, uh, truthfully and truly the healthy decision for them? That may not be a vaccine for some people, they're not the ones to make that decision. That person and their medical professional would be the ones to make that decision. So we really rely on the message getting out. Is there anything else you want me to know? Uh, is there any, do you have any questions on how we're handling that, that communication, Madam Chair and Commissioners?
Madam Chair, go ahead. Um, I was thinking a nice jingle with music, you know, like, huh, it's played over and over again and then it, it, you know, like little kids will run to the TV when they hear that music come on.
Yeah.
And they know that, and they know how to influence their parents to buy them whatever. But I thought, you know, maybe something like that would work. I mean, those who understand the psychology of how the mind works and how you can change your behavior. I mean, I think that would be something, you know, that would be real helpful.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Todechini, we, we find this to be an interesting study. And I, I believe that in the next twenty to thirty years, what, um, students were studying, uh, in, when I was in school, won't be happening. Students will be studying how the communication and the response to, uh, the COVID pandemic, that's gonna be studied three years to come. Uh, interestingly, like you all, I read the news, and what I saw most recently is, uh, COVID vaccine lotteries were not helpful in any way, shape, or form. And if they were, it was very minimally, uh, the chance of winning millions of dollars did not increase the, the, the number of people, um, getting vaccinated. And unfortunately, I'm afraid that, that people are already being beat over the head. Um, there is a virtue in repetitiveness. I'm afraid if we go much further, we're gonna have, um, uh, some interesting challenges on our hands. Where people don't want to listen to us for anything at all, COVID-related or not. They just, some people are to that breaking point. Interested in any creative solutions and, um, you know, repetition of message is extremely valuable. But after a year and a half, almost two years, I'm, I'm not even sure that that's gonna make a difference in, in the, the constituents that we see. And, and a lot of the messages that we see is people don't trust the government at whatever level you choose. Uh, yesterday when we put out information about the standard crisis, uh, uh, crisis, crisis of care standard, I, yeah, pardon me. Um, uh, when we saw that message come out, we see people confused. They say, well, why, why is the city allowing this to happen? Well, the city doesn't have anything to do with the hospital. Well, why is the county allowing this to happen? Well, county owns the, the property, but we don't dictate how that happens. That comes from a much higher level than we do. So, um, our constituency has to be handled, um, a little bit differently than, than other parts of the world. And we're finding challenges exceeding challenges in, in tailoring our messages of anything to, to get out to the people.
I guess it's like, um, this is the twenty-first century human. I mean, I'm, I'm, um, found this other way. So I guess, uh, somebody out there knows how to reach these people, so I guess we just have to keep looking.
And I, and I agree with, uh, Devin, is that we're in the twenty-first century, we have a lot of good stuff at our fingertips. And the tough thing is, uh, public and people in healthcare, there's a big chasm there. Because when you've studied, done research, and what you hear, what you just said, I totally understand the confusion. Um, it, why would you understand it? And what you're hearing and what, what the research is, totally different. So I agree with you, um, I know the hospital, Dr. Greenberg, has like a six-part film, uh, video, whatever, he talks about the miss. And I think we do have to go to trusted sources of information and, you know, step, take a step back. So I agree with you.
And Madam Chair, even that message in and of itself, uh, Georgette and I shared, uh, that message, I believe it was last week. And you would be shocked at the comments we got.
Oh, I'm sure.
overwhelmingly negative, uh, people who at that point don't even trust, uh, medical professionals. And it's worse yet that the medical professional's view is then shared by the government. Um, we're, we're, we're in uncharted territory.
We are.
Perfectly frank.
We are.
And, um, we're gonna keep chipping away at it, but, uh,
That's what we can do.
But we're, we're met with, uh, a very interesting brand of resistance.
I kind of think it's like, uh, MRSA, you know, MRSA's around and so, so is knowledge and resistance to knowledge, so it takes a while. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Hey, uh, could I get in a minute, we get, we get down to this discussion, I don't intend to, I sort of. I was wanting Mike to give us an update on fifty-five-hundred Navajo Canyon Bridge and, and the road to Chaco.
Okay, yeah, sure. Mike, do you have anything else?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you like me to speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, yes, on the fifty-five-hundred bridge project, uh, that project is moving along quite well. Of course, the, the project completion date for contract is set for, uh, May of, of next year. Uh, but why, and I don't have Mr. Perel in the room to give you a specific update, but it appears like that project is moving along well and could very well be done ahead of schedule. So, of course, we've been able to maintain, um, you know, access for folks in the community during the time that the bridge has been under construction. And of course advising if you can to try to avoid the area just to, you know, take it easy on the construction workers in the, in the construction zone. But, but yes, that seems to be moving a well, along quite well. So on the road to Chaco on, on Road seventy-nine fifty, uh, the last meeting you had asked about a, an update there. And ironically, I had received that morning, an inquiry from the Lieutenant Governor of the State of New Mexico, who was responding to some concerns, uh, about the condition of the road. You know, it's approximately fifteen miles and the county maintains eleven miles up to the Escobado Wash. The remaining four miles are maintained into the park by the Navajo Nation. And that seems to be the area that usually gets the most, um, um, highest level of complaints. Um, our, the, the road on our side is very, very well maintained by our Public Works Department, not so much on the other. So I did forward to the Lieutenant Governor and made the Chief of Staff for the Vice President's Office of the Navajo Nation aware that we'd received that concern. I also forwarded our letter that the County Commission had sent to, to the President and Vice President of the Navajo Nation, uh, informing them once again, reminding them, I guess, of their obligation to maintain that road. That was in December of last year. Uh, and unfortunately, we've not had much movement there. Now, recently, we've been asked, uh, to come to the table, um, to dust off our old intergovernmental, uh, agreement with the Navajo Nation to have them have us do some, some roadwork on their behalf. We've, we've done that before when we have capacity to do so with our staff and equipment. Um, but one of the projects that we will put on our list for them to consider, uh, very strongly is, is, uh, improving, um, that road, the last four miles. So, uh, I believe that meeting is, is forthcoming, uh, when Mr. Perel and myself and others participate. We'll be certain to bring that back to the Commission to let you know, uh, you know, how that meeting went. And, and of course, ultimately, any projects that we end up doing as part of that agreement will ultimately be approved by the County Commission. So you all will have the opportunity, uh, to also include that project if it, for some reason, doesn't make the list of requested projects, so. Does that help, help you with, uh, an update?
Well, I thought that it might be good just for the benefit of the public.
Yes, yes, I appreciate you asking that question.
There any other reports? I don't see anybody, so, um, Devin, do we have any comments online? Are there any emails or letters received? Um, at this time, uh, there, it's limited, if that, we did have the public comment, it'd be limited to subjects that the Commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken, nor formal action we've taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. And this time we don't, it doesn't appear that we have any comments. Um.
Do we have someone?
Do we have a comment? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we hadn't come forward, if you'll identify yourself.
Good afternoon.
Behind that.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, everyone here. Um, I'm Gillian Aragon with the Bureau of Land Management. Um, we've gone through quite a bit of changes in our leadership over the past several years. As you know, our Farmington Field Manager passed away in February. It's a great loss for our office and for the Bureau. Um, and we've also had our district manager, who was, we introduced maybe two years ago, Al Alser. He has taken a detail to our BLM New Mexico State Office to support our minerals team. And in his place, we have Mr. Chuck Schmidt. Um, he is joining us from the Roswell Field Office during this time. Uh, he has many, many years with the agency and with leading teams. And as a reminder, our Farmington District, it does cover just about everything north of I forty, uh, for public lands and federal minerals. And so I just wanted to introduce him real quick. What's the opportunity of him to come up? We'll bring him up here.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Chuck Schmidt, I'm out of the Roswell Field Office, and it's been my pleasure, I've been here since basically starting week four. Uh, other than drinking out of the fire hose, uh, and, and learning all the, you know, the local concerns and such, uh, it's, it's been a real blessing. Uh, the, the staff here in the Farmington Field Office, folks, you guys really should be proud of them. And also tied in with the Farmington District, of course, is our tallest field office as well. So I've spent, spent a little bit of time over there, but, uh, found this, this meeting really, uh, refreshing. I'm, I'm typically participating in Lincoln and Chavis and Roseville Counties, obviously. Some of, some of the presentations that you've had today, wind energy in particular is something I'm very, uh, familiar with. Uh, we've actually seen quite an influx of that starting down south. So, uh, anything I can do to, to help you guys, uh, potentially understand some of what's might be coming, uh, these transmission lines. Uh, they're, they're a long, long-term commitment, they're a big deal within our agency. So I think as you see the, the state transition based on some of these goals, you're gonna probably be hearing more and more of these style of projects. And, uh, the, the presence of the BLM, you know, and status and, and what I'm kind of looking at the maps and seeing what you guys have here. We're gonna be talking quite a bit. Now, you've only got me for four months, uh, I'm scheduled to be here through, uh, mid-January at this point. But there's a lot of vacancies, uh, in the leadership roles we're out there right now. And so we're doing everything we can to get up, and that's what brings me up. So any questions I can answer for you folks?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Schmidt? Hearing that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aragon. All right, with that, do we have anything else? Any more comments? Seeing her hearing that, then I will say we're adjourned.